Well, yeah. Get the door. Yeah, I can't, I can't count votes. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 27th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And ask if you have cell phones or pagers, if you would silence them at this time, we would appreciate that. And if you are not the applicant and you're here to address us about a case today, there are sign up sheets on the table outside the chambers, they're about this big. If you would complete one of those, we'd be happy to hear you. First order of business is the October 13th minutes.
Move approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
A motion is second to approve the minutes, cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Continuance request, Russell.
We have six uncontested requests for continuance. These are items 18 through 23. Item 18 through 21, request to continue until November the 10th. Item 22, continue to December the 8th, and item 23 is withdrawn.
Did anyone come to talk to us today about any of the cases just read 18 through 23? Take a motion?
Move the uncontested requests.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve the continuances, cast your votes, and they're approved.
There are four new requests for continuance. Item nine is PUD 1443, request to continue until December the 8th. Item 10, C 6309, request to continue until December the 8th. Item 14, C 6249, request to continue until November the 10th. Item 15, S P U D 623, request to continue until December the 8th.
Again, did anyone come to talk to us today about items nine, 10, 14, or 15? Did you want to say something?
Can you go on record?
If you'll come to the microphone, we can't hear you. If you'd be good enough to give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, Anne Kreiser. I live at 8404 Surrey Place. I will not be present for the November 10th meeting, and I would just like to go on record, I did send in a letter of opposition, but I would like to add to that. Our property is, it abuts the property that they're proposing to go from five to seven lots, and if that happens, we will have three to four lots in our backyard, which makes me think it'll be like an apartment complex, because all of their renderings are suggesting two-story homes. And I'm just opposed to having four homes looking in our backyard, so I'd like to add that to that, please.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, I'll take a motion to continue items nine, 10, 14, and 15.
Move the new continuances.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second, cast your votes, please, and those continuances are approved. Are there any continuous requests from the public today? Would you come to the microphone, please? And give us your name and address, and tell us which case you're...
Greg Massey with Massey Man and Associates, 2339 South Brand, Edmond, Oklahoma, representing client Colony Point Investors on items 11 and 12, S P U D 637 and 638. We would like to request a two-week continuance.
And what do you intend to do in that two weeks?
We would like to have the opportunity to meet with some of the commissioners, and Commissioner of that ward, to discuss the request on those S P UDs.
That makes perfect sense.
Mr.?
Yes.
Before we vote on that, did anyone come here today to talk to us about items 11 and 12, other than the applicant? Okay. I'll take a motion to continue items 11 and 12 to November 10th.
Second.
Okay, cast your votes, and we'll see you on November 10th.
Thank you.
This meeting's getting shorter and shorter. Okay, we're ready for the consent docket.
On the consent docket, we have five items. Item one is PC 10287, item two, PC 10288. Item three, we will hear in order. Item four is C 5775, item five, PC 10290.
Did anyone come today to talk to us about items one, two, four, or five? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for the consent docket. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, items one, two, four, and five. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item three is CE 815, which is an application by the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority to close all of the planted 20-foot east-west easements and other easements in the Medical Center replat in Ward 7.
Is the applicant here? Hi, Emily.
Hi.
Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Emily Pomeroy at 301 North Harvey, Suite 200.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority, and they have applied for a vacation of the easements that are marked in red up above. Because of ONG's objection that we received last week, the Urban Renewal Authority would like to withdraw its request for the two southernmost east-west easements, which are marked with blue Xs there, and we'd just like to proceed with the northernmost east-west easement and the north-south easement that are marked.
Okay.
The development of the northern part of that site is rather imminent, so moving forward with those two at this time is prudent for the Urban Renewal Authority.
That'll be the hotel site?
No, the hotel site will be on the eastern portion of that site, and will go south, where those two are marked out, and so we'll need to revisit those at a later time. The OK Kids Corral will be on the north, I'm sorry, I said east. The hotel will be on the west side of that site, the OK Kids Corral will be on the east side of that site, and that, they're ready to break ground in the next few months.
Okay.
The reason for the objection is they need time to relocate lines, they're negotiating that with you, or they just want, what's the deal there?
I spoke with Henry Blue Jackett, who wrote ONG's objection yesterday, and we just need to sit down with ONG and with the Presbyterian Health Foundation and talk about the proper relocation of the ONG lines in those two southernmost easements. And that will happen, we intend to do that, but we just need to go ahead and move on those others if possible.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion?
You approve the application deleting the southern two lines as indicated on the overhead map.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve item three as conditioned, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to hear item 17 out of order. If you'll read that one.
Item 17 is PUD SP 1426A, an application by Johnson and Associates for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1426 at 60624 Northwest 62nd Street in Ward 2.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson and Associates, representing the applicant. Here with me today also is Dennis Box and Rand Elliott. Rand has some renderings that we can pass around to add to what the staff has seen on this application. This particular building is in the far northeast corner of what we're calling the East Campus Site. It's right behind an existing auto repair shop and adjacent and west of the railroad tracks on the east side of the East Campus. As the staff report mentions, it's part of a PUD that required site plan approval. This will be their central plant, which will operate their heating and cooling elements that are running throughout the main campus as well as the East Campus.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? We now have, I think, a complete application.
Mr. Chairman, noting that the staff has reviewed this and find that the plans have been approved.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve item 17, cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you for moving a second.
Item six is C 6312, it's a final plat of Ward's Edge at Sunny Point in Ward 4.
Good afternoon, I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and this is a final plat on a piece of property that you all approved, the preliminary plat a few months ago. It matches the preliminary plat, we're in agreement with all the TEs, and we'd ask for your approval.
Commissioners, no one has signed up? Any questions or comments? Are your motions approved?
One quick comment, and I'll second the motion. My comment is that I don't have a problem with the plat, but this is one of those classic cases where we're allowing residential encroachment into an industrial area, and later on, we're liable to hear about that. With that, I second the motion.
I think this one is kind of a unique situation, because of the path that he took in making this work.
No, I understand.
I think it's, you know, a really good thing that we've done this in this particular case.
It works real well right now. I'm worried about the future.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve item six, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you, Kendall.
Item seven is ABC 747, application by D C W Investments for an ABC 1, 2145 Southwest 104th Street, Ward 5.
My name's David Kennedy, address is 1601 Northwest Expressway, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, D C W Investments LLC. That is the local franchisee with respect to Qdoba Restaurants. They're building a freestanding building at 2145 Southwest 104th Street. They have a franchise obligation to be able to sell beer, hence our application.
Commissioners, no one signed up?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve item seven, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item eight is S P U D 636, an application by E and K Investments to rezone 7704 South Douglas from C 3 to S P U D 636 in Ward 5.
My name's James Thomas, I live at 2105 Bent Twig Road in Edmond, Oklahoma. This is actually the back parking lot of Eskridge Honda, and what they're doing is they're installing some hail protection canopies for their inventory, and the paperwork was not done correctly back in '04, and what we're doing is, we're doing as a spud now to have that property doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Okay. This is just basically an extension of the same type of canopies you put out front?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No one has signed up, Commissioners?
Second.
We have a motion is second to approve item eight, cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Items nine and 10 are being continued until December the 8th, items 11 and 12 until November the 10th. Item 13 is C 6310, a final plat of Colony Point Commercial in Ward 1.
Greg Massey, Massey Man and Associates, representing Colony Point Commercial. We've reviewed the staff report and agree with all the TEs. We'll answer any questions the Planning Commission may have.
I understand, JJ, that we can delete TEs 3 and 4?
Yes. That is correct.
Yeah, we want to delete those two.
Okay.
So you're not going to extend the West Expressway?
That's correct.
At one point, the staff had some concern about continuing this, or...
Do you have your mic on, Mike?
Okay.
Okay. So three applications, so this one we think is pretty well okay and ready to go.
Well, what's confusing me is, is the other two, we're talking about, basically, we're piecemealing out areas in a PUD, and then this one comes in, and it covers the whole area, and I'm...
It's going to be one of our points of conversation that we're going to take up about in there.
Well, I'm just not clear.
Regarding the 11 and 12, understood.
Is there any advantage to moving forward with this one while the other two remain unresolved? Should we continue this one until the others are heard, so that we can do them all at once?
I think our point that we discussed earlier was, Staff and I, is that this, the other two deal specifically with signage. This one is really, like he said, just a minor subdivision that continues to be governed under the regs with respect to the underlying PUD. I think the other was a little more of a change. I wasn't crazy about this as being separate from the other two initially, but I think I got a little more comfortable with it after we discussed it. JJ, before the meeting, you're right.
You make a good point, Nick, because we talked about that, why we have three applications and not one.
Right. Right. But I'm neutral, I mean, it doesn't...
Clearly, there's going to be a problem getting more signage along Northwest Highway.
Oh, absolutely. Those other two, I'm not...
Right.
I'm not saying I have any difficulty with this one, I do have some difficulties with the other two.
Right.
Where I was going was, since they were all together, I was just confused as to, you know, what the urgency of hearing the third piece is.
If I might answer that question, or at least explain the urgency for the developers. They are currently under contract on two separate out parcels to try and move forward with those for development purposes. Obviously, signage is still one of the issues on those contracts. However, without the property being platted, they can't move forward with, you know, the required development process.
In fairness to you, you probably want to be aware that additional signs there are going to be difficult to justify. We looked at Colony Point, and then we looked at Village Verde, and we looked at what we wanted Northwest Highway to be, and it's going to be a real push to get us to go back and renegotiate parts of those large PUDs that we've spent so much time working on.
I understand.
So your client, I think, should be aware, and the people who are considering these out parcels should be aware, that there may not be any change in the signage as now understood by the PUD.
The current contract they're under right now, that client is aware, the tenant is aware, and since they're looking at being the first in, they're not real concerned about it.
Okay, well, as long as they understand that...
It gives you some sense of where, what the reason for this particular application versus, it makes more sense now, potentially, just this is a rezone versus the other, given the urgency. I think I get that now.
Just because they're so related, I'll play devil's advocate with you. We may be making it more difficult for these two people to spend a lot more money on this if they're counting on getting the next two applications approved. Conversely, having said that, when those next two applications come before us, I don't think it's going to carry a lot of weight to say, well, you approved the final plat just to build this.
Right. I think that's fair, definitely fair.
And again, you know, I certainly understand that, and I guess ultimately, they're going to be required to platted whether the S P UDs are approved or not, and again, just trying to move forward with their first sale, rather than have it set. Sinage is not affecting this particular lot, because there was actually a variance granted that will allow them to locate with another adjacent tenant.
Power to them. I'll move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion is second to approve item 13, cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 14 is continued until November the 10th, item 15 until December the 8th. Item 16 is S P 439, an application by Site Excel for a special permit to erect a 125-foot telecommunications tower in C 4 and I 2 districts at 4416 Southwest Third Street, Ward 3.
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, Dennis Box and Ron Toll, we're here on behalf of AT&amp;T, and if you recall, the final four, which is, most people think of basketball, it was actually the last Planning Commission, when I think you denied all four of AT&amp;T's applications. They went back and decided they needed to do some things differently, and so we are now coming before you with a complete application. As Mr. Hensley noted last time, that was, this was the last case, and I think there was at least some discussion about the land use factor, but after the other three, we'll at least have a complete application. We agree, and we have that at the present time. We have no protest. This is a mini-story, we have hotels around it, and Ron and I are here to answer any questions, if you have any. It's a site where co-location wasn't an option. We have I 40 in close proximity, so we have a capacity issue, and we would ask for your approval.
We received all the letters of consent from the folks around.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve item 16, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you very much. We're at the end of individual items.
We... Yep. We've got a mini-record going here. I see a note to approve the 2012 Planning Commission meeting schedules, but I don't have a copy of the meeting schedule. Where is it? Well, that's not fair. Oh, here it is.
Yes?
I have it now. Anyone have any comments on the 2012 agenda? Motion?
I have a comment.
Good.
And this is a very self-centered kind of observation, but my children started school this year on the 1st of August, and I'm assuming that that's going to be a permanent thing. I was wondering if there had been any thought to changing the two meetings versus one meeting summer schedule from what it is now in July and August, only one meeting, to maybe June and July, only one meeting? And I know, sort of historically, the courthouses were closed in August and all that sort of thing, and that they're probably, I don't know what this practice relates back to in terms of summer vacations, but I just found it out there for thought.
Well, the reason we did it a couple of years ago was to sort of follow the city council, they dropped half of their meetings in July and August, and so we dropped half of ours. If we have two in August, I won't be here, but that's okay.
Well, as I look around the horse shed, maybe, well, no, I'm not either. I'm not the only person who's going to be affected by this, so if the other planning commissioners have any thoughts, they'd like to share on that subject. But I think that the Oklahoma City schools, at least, are going to go to this system now, where summer vacation is now June and July, so...
Is this a trial year for them, to see how it works? Do they...
Well, I don't think so. I think they've decided. They did a pilot program at a few schools over the last couple of years, and I think they jumped in with both feet, so...
Good, actually, but that's just my opinion. Doesn't mean I'll be here in August, though. Anyone else want to weigh in on that?
I think it's a great idea, I mean, my kids are in school all the way through. I don't know if we can, we have the ability to change that, given the time we're in council, for all the time we're taking.
Well, there was no real magic to being tied into the council, it was just, they were taking, cutting their time in half in August. Activity tended to drop off a bit for us in July and August, so that's why I first proposed it several years ago.
Well, should we ask the staff to give it a little thought and see if it would inconvenience them?
What precisely would you like to see?
To go to one meeting in June and two meetings in August, so that we're, the months that we're meeting only once will be June and July, rather than July and August.
I don't know what you should do.
We can modify it if you want.
We've worked great for me, Janice, because then I'd have one meeting in June, one in July, and one in August. Because that's...
You guys have hired a lot to be here.
It's getting better all the time.
Just approve it with that amendment, to go to the two meetings, and we'll make the change and bring it back to you. But we need to make the decision today, so we can get it to the clerk.
We do? So can we sort of, does it make a calendar, we can do a specific date on those?
Well, would just, in your motion, go to the, change from one to two?
And it would be the second Thursday in June, whatever.
We'll get the dates on and bring it back.
You would delete June 28th.
Right.
And you would add August 23rd, wouldn't you? 14 days after the 13th?
Yeah.
I shall move for approval of the schedule with that change.
Second. We have a motion is second to approve that schedule. I voted no, Janice, just for the record, but it passed 7 to 1. Okay, Planning Commission committees? Planning Commission members? Nick?
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment. Had the opportunity this week to go to the ribbon-cutting for a new, redeveloped neighborhood, the fairgrounds over on Northeast 7th, just back west of Martin Luther King.
I bet you we know somebody who was involved in that.
We do know someone who was involved in it, heavily involved in it, and they did one absolutely outstanding job. If you guys haven't gone and driven that neighborhood, do so. And I don't know if any of the units are still open for inspection, but go through them. This is a neat deal, and they did an absolutely outstanding job, and this old boy next to me here had a big heavy hand in it.
I agree. Bob Bright and I toured with James several months ago, and it is an impressive project.
Well, I saw it several months ago, but it wasn't finished. Go through it now. It's amazing.
Congratulations, James.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and thank you so much, and we'll see you at some events if some of you guys want to call me, and we'll get together and go look at some. Yeah. One of the key things we tried to do, though, some of the things that we've been pushing for, to make our communities more levelable, and, you know, we've got large front porches on, and we've got three-caliber trees, that, we've got the garages all, we have two units with the garages, there's space in the street, but they're back behind the front wall of the dwelling, and then the other units are, the garages are from the rear entrance, and the units have like a drive with the garages in the back, so we tried to incorporate some of the things, sidewalks, we tried to incorporate a lot of the things that we've been pushing for on the commission, so it can be seen, the height can be... so it can be seen, how it can be done, and that it is possible, so thank you for all your support, and thank you much.
Well done. Planning Department?
I don't think I have anything today. One thing, I mean, we, John and I have discussed this, but we've talked about the idea of some of these difficult, complex projects, I should say, that have a significant sort of planning layer to them, that we might have, I might have staff come up and present the planning department's perspective on some of these issues, and I, we would make that available also to the other departments on those complex situations where the staff report is perhaps not enough to be able to present all the information on it, so I think that's going to help the dialogue.
I thought we would try that and see how we do with it, how well it works. Development Services, J.J., see, you never have anything. Municipal Council's office, same. Citizens to be heard. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.